Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Bryan Beck's zoning board appeals meeting for January 18th, 2023. And the first order of business is going to be the minutes. But before I get into that, I just wanted to thank Catherine for pinch hitting for me last month, since I couldn't suddenly be here. And I understand you did a great job, which I am not surprised, and I appreciate it.
Coaching for Kim, so.
Wow, I'm sure you did great. And I also would also like to probably reiterate what was said at the last meeting, which was thanking Tim Econoply for all of his years of service here. He did a great job, especially with the sign variances and things like that. We're going to miss him. And it figures that I finally figured out how to pronounce his name correctly after all these years, and he leaves. But anyway, he was a great member, and I really appreciate all his efforts. So as far as the minutes go, I can't really speak to them since I work from here. I mean, they looked okay to me. The rest of the gang.
I think everyone's had little comments, and then I said you won yesterday. I don't know if you have a chance to look at it.
I have a chance to look at it.
Okay. So all I had added in addition to what had been commented down was just that, just a little explanation as to Whitman's revised application, why we asked for the revisions, and that those were provided to us. That's essentially all I had.
Great, great. So with those revisions, do I have a... Do I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented with the revisions that Kim mentioned? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm just going to abstain because I wasn't present. All right, and that brings us to the one matter that we have, which is the new application, which is Maitland. And I presume we have folks here to present. If you've been through this before, I think. And all we're really looking for is to see if we have enough information to accept the application. I'll tell you, we're probably going to ask for a little bit more information, but we just want to have you present it to us and probably ask you some questions. And then we'll see if there's a sufficient amount of information for us to accept the application. So with that said, whoever is going to present, please stand up there at the microphone, announce your name, speak slowly, loudly, so everybody can hear you in TV land.
Thank you. First of all, thank you all for doing what you're doing. I'd like to introduce my wife, who is my partner in this effort, Gloria. And this has actually become a fun project for us. I think we could go to the... Well, I mean, this is the existing house, and we are expanding on Upper Hook Road, hooking in. And this is called the garage, but it doesn't function anymore. There's no floor in it, and it's pretty, pretty going to fall down. So. So this is the site. This is the house. This is the garage. And right behind the garage is a pool, which I think you had something to do with in the past.
Yes, there was an application for a variance in order to put a pool in. So I know we did the site, and it's there. And I was there about a year ago, maybe.
So the pool, the pool is now dug out of the ground, but there's a lot of dirt here and there, and it isn't finished at all. River Road on the west, Upper Hook Road on this side. This is a hot line, and this is where 199 cuts through to the bridge over here. And Dr. Plaid over there. This is the proposed site plan in addition to the house here, and a pool room at this end. And this is garages and storage space for tractor and stuff. And then this is on the second floor. I'll pass this one. This is the first floor plan. This is the existing house, which is here. We propose to add on the existing house at this point, a dining room. Currently, the dining room is on the floor above the kitchen. And it makes... And this is a stair that goes up here. It's about two and a half feet wide, and it makes a very awkward use of the dining room connected with the kitchen. We're planning to put the dining room here at this point. And there's a bathroom under the stairs, which is fairly functional. We're planning to put another bathroom in this location. Across a courtyard here, there'll be a large building. This will be a pool house for the pool. And a bathroom, changing room this side. And this is for casual food, if anybody wants to eat. In the middle is a staircase going up. And behind the staircase on this side, there is a machine room for the pool equipment and for any other equipment that she has. She has two cars here, and this is a storage building for tractors and stuff like that. Oh, this is the second floor of the building. Living room is here. The former dining room is here, which will become a music room. This is all new. This is a closet in this location, a bathroom here, and the primary bedroom in this end. On the other side, we have an office here with an assistant in this location. This is the stair coming up. And in this area, we have... We're using that as a music room. And that is...
Quick question on the house now. I know the existing house is approximately 1,500 square feet.
Yes.
What is it going to be when, assuming this goes through, what's the square footage? What's the increase? Approximately?
I think there's a site plan.
Yes.
That's currently in place.
Go back a few sheets.
Yeah.
Yes.
What is it going to be?
Here it is, right here. Can you see this?
It's 1,500 plus right now.
Right now, it's 1,560, and with the addition, it will be?
It looks like it's 3,025. That's the principal house, right?
Right.
What was that, 3,000?
3,025.5 square feet is the main house.
Okay, so it's basically going to be double. That's the proposal.
Yes, right.
That's it.
And then what's the square footage of the accessory structure?
That is...
3,002.
And there was a bathroom in the accessory structure, right?
Yes.
Is it being considered as habitable, as living space?
Sorry?
Is it... Are we looking at it as living space?
So the determination letter classified it as a guest cottage. And one of the reasons that it classified it as a guest... I spoke to Michael Trimble, the acting CEO, today. The reason that he classified it as guest cottage is because of the shower. There's a shower right in the bathroom. So it's a full bathroom. And even though it listed it office space, just because it could... The physical attributes could be considered to be a bedroom. The way bedroom is defined in the R.A. Ten zoning law does allow a standing court discretion as to how it can be classified. So the bathroom with the two open rooms is why it's being classified as a guest cottage. So that kind of goes, I guess, a little bit to your habitable space question. There is a variance required.
For the size.
For the size.
And the garage, I know it's not particularly usable in disrepair. What's the size of the garage now versus what is proposed for the pool house?
It's right there.
It says the attached garage is 500 square feet.
I read that one, too. Yeah, I think that was in the narrative.
Yes.
And the garage, the current garage will be removed or demolished.
And the rest of the pool house, what's the size of that?
It's 360 square feet nominally inside.
3,000, right there. 3,000.
Do you mean just the pool house?
No, the whole structure. Because I know there's a garage there. I've been there.
3,200.
So you're going from whatever's there now to 3,200.
Yeah, a two-car garage, a tractor barn, and the rest of the building of the house comes to 3,208 square feet.
So the guest cottage is bigger than, will be bigger than the actual house?
Yes.
By?
Well, three quarters of it is barn and tractor.
Oh, down below.
Yeah, but it's 200 square feet larger. But a lot of that space is not for cars or people. It's for cars and tractors and mechanical equipment.
And the chemical room, which is for the pool, and it's also for, at some point, our client wants solar power and batteries. So we needed to leave some room in there for solar power, power and batteries.
Is that going to be on the roof or?
It'll be on the roof. You can see it in one of the drawings.
Yeah.
But the second floor, which is all potentially habitable. Right. Is 1,200 and some square feet. Correct. Okay.
And this side of the building faces sort of south, and that will be full of solar panels.
I have a quick question. I think there was, in different parts of the application, the property was listed as either 1.8 or 2.2 acres.
Yes.
It's 1.8 on the original survey.
Right.
If you do the math, we think it's 2.2, but we'll take 1.8.
Yeah, they wanted to tell us it's 2.2, not 1.8.
I mean, I think it makes just a little bit of difference in the reason. This is obviously the size of the structures is increasing dramatically. So the figure of the lot, the...
Right. Well, she told us it is 2.2. What's it say on Duchess?
Parcel axis is 1.8.
1.8.
That's what it is.
That's probably what we do.
That's what you have to go by.
I will say, so parcel axis isn't necessarily an accurate description. It's a pretty good way of going, but it has a disclaimer that it's not the end-all deal. I would say the survey, though, that you have, the survey, if the survey says 1.8, I think that's more indicative that it probably is 1.8. Or at least for this purpose, that's what the ZVA should be considering it.
What is the tax stat?
Right.
1.8?
Yeah.
That's, yeah. Tips looking at the survey, this survey. This one.
There it is.
Yeah.
So it's 1.8.
Yeah, I turned it on, had a copy of this application. Do you know when this survey was done? 2,021?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was done, that's the date of the survey. Information is on it, but I don't think that's the official survey.
Okay, got it. They just kind of worked off the...
We can do an accurate calculation.
As you know, the topic.
I'll tell you how the numbers are.
Oh, okay.
So Bob said that he can, he'll just do a re-betrayment of it to clarify what it is, 1.8 or 2.2.
Yeah, it's just a question.
Well, it does impact, it does impact... So one of the variances that you're speaking is because it's in the RA-10 district, which requires 10 acres, it just, it sort of matters in terms of what the variance request is. You're going from 1.8 or 2.2.
I mean, I know it's not locked, but the less variance we can give, it's easier.
Right.
Right.
So. One thing that I always ask for, and sometimes we get, sometimes we don't get it.
Actually, before you want to go through the elevation, then that was the next.
Okay.
And then that will lead into your question.
So these elevations, these elevations are preliminary, I would say. We're still in schematic design phase. So the elevations, we're still exploring some of the elevations and some of the windows as well. So.
But the sizes will not change.
Are you in front of the planning board?
We are. We have, is one thing we have to go to in four. Okay, we'll just come right first.
Okay.
We're in the planning board for...
Assuming in February.
Yeah.
I think the second meeting is what we did.
Okay, so you're, so you're, so you're getting one for...
Yeah.
Okay. Is it, is it just site plan or special use permit or?
Not sure.
Oh, but you're on, you're on.
It's a site plan. I don't know if special use permit or not, but I bet.
Okay. Okay, but you're going to be at the, in February, you're going to be in front of the board.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you want to... So these are preliminary ones?
Yes, right. And that kind of segues into what I always ask for. Sometimes we get, sometimes we don't get it. But I, for the helpful part, I think the rest of the board have renderings. And as an example, this is rendering the renderings that we ran in the recent application, just showing the proposal and how it's situated on the property. Because it's a small piece of property, given the size of the structures that are proposed and all that. So to see how it's going to fit and, you know, try to be realistic. We've had some renderings where trees were bigger than they should have been, or more trees than they're... I know there are not a lot of trees on this property because it goes out there.
Well, you know, Bob, show them where the trees are.
And that would be another thing, is renderings, not only of the buildings and how they're situated on the property, how they're going to be, but also what vegetation there's going to be, what kind of screening. Because you're right on River Road and, you know, things like that.
The property is quite high. The property is high where the house sits. It comes up very high.
Yeah, this is, this is what happens with the property.
No, I know.
So from River Road, the house looks small.
And you may not, you're not going to see as much, because you're going out the back.
Right.
You may see it from, you know, the other road.
Yeah, no, you haven't, there was a landscape plan that was included. I don't, I don't know if it was kind of leftover from the pool.
No.
But it was kind of hard, you know, it was just, it was very hard to kind of read. I don't know if you, if it's going to be part of your plan, would you mind resubmitting the landscape?
Well, you know, we stopped with the landscape plan for a bit because we were at first, because this is very preliminary. We looked at the semi, the permeable and the non-permeable surfaces. And because of snow, we all know, you know, how do we deal with that? But so we took, we originally had a stone wall. I don't know if you remember, there was a stone wall. We had a stone wall so that when you approached the house, there was a stone wall and sort of courtyard on a stone wall. So we took this stone wall out because we thought, you know, that's just going to be more non-permeable, you know. And we actually drew a little garden in. And there's going to be, next to the pool house, they really are into cooking. I don't know if you know, but her partner is a chef. So there's going to be a lot of growing, growing of food and, yeah. So there's a lot of that on the property, but I'd be happy to put that in. If some of it is already there.
Yeah, it just, it was just...
That was done by the pool architect.
Okay.
This part, yeah.
Yeah.
Could you go to the first floor plan, please?
The first floor plan, yeah.
Yeah, this, this site was rather difficult because the pool is here. And the pool house had to relate to that. And right here, right about here, is the overflow from the septic that comes out of the house. And then all the leaching field was back in here. So the ability to put something on the property is pretty limited. We could either go here, which didn't seem like a good idea. Here is even worse. And so this really ended up being the only place to go.
Did you have to do a new well or septic for the accessory structure?
No.
And that septic is going to handle that?
For the septic, we have to. We have to, we have to double the size of the septic. And that's really partly the existing house, which has an old septic system for a smaller house. So we're going to add to the existing house with this, with this structure here. And therefore, if we put the rest of it on the same structure, it's good.
Just for clarity, if you show them where the building is, garage and tractor, and everything is pool house. Just put a line on there.
This?
Yeah, you're going right there.
Okay.
It's a middle line.
This is the garage for tractors and stuff. This is for the cars, mechanical equipment, entry to go upstairs, and the pool house.
But so the accessory structure and everything is all going to be in the one septic system?
Yes.
And has one well, that's, one well?
Yes. That's disappointing interest. Is, is the walls are very thick, the existing walls?
They certainly are.
Yeah.
Stone walls.
It doesn't show that.
On the new part.
Right. No, well, we're going to have better walls than the stone walls, that's for sure. But it's probably going to come as six pounds, come to the site as walls that'll just be erected in place. But they're going to, they're going to be serious ones.
Is that the, those two circles, is that the septic?
Trees.
No, these are, these are the two trees that are on the site.
And they're fairly important.
Yes, they're really two trees. The septic is over here.
And the septic is over there.
Yeah.
So the new structure that's being built, we're taking down the garage and downstairs. It's going to be utility, being colds and things. Will upstairs, there will be a bathroom?
Yes.
So will you have to get okay from the Duchess County Board of Health?
Yes. I've talked with them already.
Okay.
And he said for us to get the, get the person that's going to put in the septic system to design it, and then he will put...
I think there's just one more. These are just, I think, existing.
Yes.
And that just shows the pool is big.
Yeah, that's, that's the pool, but it's been changed since then. It's concrete support. But a lot of the fill that was dug out of the pool is still there.
Can you show them the ground with the trees, where the wall, the morning trees, which are property in the neighborhood?
I actually, I have some Google images on that with help.
Yeah, they'll really help.
This is just, this is just from Google Maps. This is just, I don't know if this is...
That's River Road?
Yeah.
Perfect.
This is from, this is also from River Road, it's kind of, are these the two trees that you?
Yes. Yeah, the street and then...
And then this is, this is, this is upper hook road right here. And then this is River Road. And this is the house right here. And then I just kind of, this is, this is going down now, Upper Hook Road. This is the driveway.
So you see that big line of trees to the right of the photograph?
Up to the right?
Yeah, big line of trees, the tall, very, very tall ones. Can you use the?
No, I...
Yeah, these.
If this is Upper Hook?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Upper Hook. So these trees right here, these streets are...
On the property.
On the property line, they go between the barn, that big barn.
Yeah, I have it, the next picture actually shows it. That's going down a little bit further. You can see this, this is the driveway right here. And then this is from the tree lines that you were talking about.
Yes.
Yeah.
So would the, would the barn, so here's the garage right here.
Right, that's where the new building would be.
Right, so it'll just go down a little bit further, right? Does it extend a little bit further?
Are there any issues with regard to the historic nature of the building? I kind of know that there are, but has it been designated as a historic structure?
Well, we're not, we're not doing anything to the building itself. We're just adding onto it in a way that would be compatible.
Probably during the planning board, AIPAC is going to probably take a look at it.
We had a, we've had a meeting with the historic society, I think, in August, September or something. We did. And I think we could, the, the building in the back is also historic.
The barn.
The little garage, right, that's falling down.
Did you receive any documentation from them as far as there are any things or anything like that?
No.
The more information we have from other sources, it's always helpful.
Oh, okay. So we should do a rendering for you.
Yes, I insist on, just because it gives us a better idea. It's not perfect, but it gives us a better idea of how it's going to appear on the property.
Sure.
And so this is...
No problem.
I assume you know what it is, but some people don't, so that's why I bring that up.
Yeah. No, no problem.
And have it accurate with regard to the vegetation that exists there and that kind of stuff.
And if, yeah, it's, I know you said it's, the design, exterior design is probably preliminary at this point, but as best as you can do in terms of like what color you're expecting just to help the board kind of understand, you know, how it's going to fit into the...
I think we're going to keep it white because, I think we might keep it white. I'm not 100% sure. There's the house in the, the range.
Yeah. And in addition to the renderings, you could also kind of do a bit of a composite of both, having both the main house together with the accessory structure. I think that will also be helpful in addition to just having renderings of each individual. So kind of individuals in a composite together.
Yes.
And at some point, obviously, we're going to stake out, you know, we're going to go out and do, even though we know the park is in the pool, we're going to go out there again. And so we have a statement of where the new buildings are going to be. That also helps us visualize how much room it's going to take up on the, on the property. It doesn't have to be done immediately, but that, something down the book that's going to be, we're going to need, just so we have a better idea of where it is on the property. Kim, are there any issues like on both rights? I saw that from Jim Levy and that kind of stuff. Anything that's going to lead to any potential additional variances?
So there are three variances that were requested from the determination letter. One is for the rear setback. So this is, this property, it's kind of situated so, so you know, you have your front yard setback. You have a corner lot, you know, it has two front yards. So this one, it has three front yards. And I'll explain the quotation mark, but you have Route 199, River Road, and then Upper Hook Road. So according to the zoning law, if you have a corner lot, you're supposed to treat both fronting roads as your front yard setbacks. If you have, but a lot's not supposed to have more than two fronting streets. So in that situation, the zoning enforcement officer makes a determination as to which lots are the fronting and which is the side and rear. So the determination letter said that because the address has a River Road address, he considered this to be kind of like your, his main fronting. And then, so he considered this to be the rear setback, the rear yard setback. So...
And Upper Hook is the other fronting?
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, it didn't really get discussed in terms of which one was, which one was...
Would make sense.
I think it would make sense, too, but it was the, the main issue was that the River Road. And so because that's the fronting address, and then this is what's running parallel to that.
But you, you can't really stop on River Road and get into the house. I mean, there really is no access from the road. So we, we chose River Road as the, as the front of the house. Therefore, we need a side yard rather than a rear yard.
So I did ask Michael, and he didn't get back to me, but when we, when the pool was done, which is on the same side, it was for a side yard. This is for a rear yard. But either way, whether it's side yard or rear yard, it's going to be a variance for that. So for accessory structures, the rear yard is 60% of what the rear yard is in the RA-10, which is 75, I believe. So 60% of 75 is 45. The accessory structure will be 20 feet, so it was a variance of 25. The accessory structure will be 20 feet, so it's a variance of 25 feet. If it were treated as a side yard, the side yard setback in the RA-10 is 100, so 75% of 100 is 75 feet. So you would still need a variance for that. And I asked Michael to just clarify which way he would like to do it. Um, you asked, um... So going to Catherine's question about size of the accessory structure, um, it has to be 1,500 square feet is what the limit is for the RA-10 for accessory structures. So this one is 3,208. So that's gonna be a variance for that. It's a variance of 1,700 feet per feet.
I remember from one other application, there was the 1,500 or... What's the 300 square feet per acre multiplied out to? Isn't that more restrictive than the other?
So it's, um... So for the RA-10, it's you take either 1,500 square feet or 300 square feet of the acreage, whichever is less restrictive. So when I took 1.8 or 2.2, that was actually less than 1,500 square feet. So 1,500 square feet is less restrictive, so that's what you're gonna go for.
Okay. That's kind of strange, but okay.
And then, uh... So because it's... It's with a guest cottage, it needs to meet the minimum lot standard, which is 10 acres. This is obviously an existing lot that's less than 10 acres. So that's where the other variance comes in.
We're gonna go with the 8.2. Right, we're gonna go with the 1.8.
Oh, 1.8? Well, if... Yeah. If Bob finds...
If you find something different, just let us know.
But...
Okay.
So the darker yellow is the full lot?
Yes.
And it's curious that it ends just before the other one. I think that's where the discrepancy is in the 0.4 acres. I mean, somewhere along the line, the neighbors probably got a line coming straight across. And therefore, they think it's 2.4. I think I didn't just see it right there. Somewhere they have... They have another record.
Yeah, this is... Yeah, this is just like the right away.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, like that's a... That's a good point.
I see, is there various due?
I've looked at a lot of maps.
Um, and then I did have a question up to Michael. So one of the other requirements for guest cottage is that it has to be, um, 600 square feet. So you're kind of getting a variance already for being over 1,500. I don't know if we would need another variance for the 600 or if that can kind of be combined in. So I have an outstanding question of another variance, but it doesn't change the plan. Just would change the number.
Okay. Well, isn't one of those rules like 900 square?
So that's for accessory apartment.
Oh, for accessory.
Yeah, so this is a guest... This is a guest cottage. So they are treated differently mainly because a guest cottage does not have a kitchen, and an apartment has to have a kitchen.
Okay.
And there was one more, um...
Right.
I don't understand.
Well, guest cottage shouldn't have a kitchen.
Yeah, I mean, but in the zoning, it's... I think it's confusing because there's a guest cottage, there's an accessory apartment.
And the caretakers.
There's the grandmother's suite or whatever, you know? There's like four... Three, four different planes that are all treated differently.
Yeah, and I was wondering too, when I, um... So as you know, that a lot of times you can't have an accessory structure fronting, closer to the fronting street. But I did look, so, you know, the... The new extension would go, you know, a little bit longer. And if Upper Hook Road were to consider a front street, I wasn't sure if another variance was, but, um, guest cottages aren't restricted to that.
They can be in front of.
They can be, yeah. So agricultural buildings, guest cottages, and caretakers apartments.
I know, it makes your head hurt.
I think most, yeah.
Can be. So there... So there shouldn't be an issue with that.
Okay, yeah. Um, yeah, another thing, other than the rendering, I was just wondering, uh, what are the other properties in the area? That their size and what kind of structures are on them? I mean, one of the things we have to consider is the, you know, character to the neighborhood. It's gonna change the character of the neighborhood.
Lots of bards on that road, Upper Hook.
Right, and so if, uh, it would be helpful to have some information as to...
Take pictures.
Yeah, what other structures there? What other, you know, we have an idea of what other parcels there are and their size, but what other structures are on those things, their general size?
I mean, I've often used personal access to then be able to say the property across the way, the house is X amount, the barn that they have is this many square feet, because it's all listed in personal access. And then that can give kind of comparison.
Right, and it just makes it... The more information we have, the better to justify whatever we're going to be doing. And we only have the five factors we have to go through. And so that's very helpful. So if you can provide, again, the renderings and that information, that's what I would like. I don't know if you guys have any additional...
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
And the landscape, if you...
Yes.
Have it.
Okay.
All right, um... Any else, Kim or...
I would just say on the renderings, if we could see them from each, you know, northwest, east, south view, so we can see what the buildings look like in relation to each other.
Sure.
All right, any other questions, concerns, or... All right, I think it's, you know, we do need some more information, but I think we, in my opinion, let's see what the rest of the team said. Um, there's enough information to accept the application, subject to receiving the additional information that we requested.
Okay.
So, yeah, at this time, I'd make a motion that we accept the application, subject to the additional information that we requested.
I'll say it.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Of course, there can't be any of these, we're all aboard. All right. So what that means is, is that your application has been approved, subject to all that additional information, um, we need. And we'll put it on for a public hearing.
February 15th.
February 15th. Is that the date that you can be here?
Yes.
Okay. And what's gonna happen is, and I know you've been through the process before, the neighbors will be advised about this application. Um, and they attend and ask you a bunch of questions about the application. We'll review the additional information and, uh, you know, basically we'll give the same presentation and answer whatever questions your neighbors might have. So some show up for the public hearing.
Sure.
Okay.
Um, so for seeker, if the... If the planning board's going to be looking into this, my suggestion is that the planning board should take lead.
I like that suggestion a lot.
So we'll... We'll delay the seeker until we'll...
Right.
See what they say.
Take lead on that.
And referrals should be to the planning board and then the WACCAB, because it's in the LWRP district. And, um, if you guys wanna discuss who wants to do the resolution? Or do you wanna do that after the public hearing?
Uh, no, I mean, um, who did the last resolution, do you? For the swimming pool?
Oh, for Matt. Uh, you know, I... That was when Jim was, um...
Oh.
So I don't have that.
I'll take it. I'll take it. I... I know. You're gonna be gone and, um... And I...
What is the resolution?
Where is it?
For, yeah.
What was the question?
What is the resolution for?
Oh, so the board, so in terms of approving or denying the variances, the way that the ZPA does it is that somebody's assigned the resolution and drops it once they do the public hearing. So that's what we're just discussing.
And I can remember, um, from going out there, that I might have done the last resolution with regard to the swimming pool.
Okay.
So, um, anyway, so, but I'll take it. Okay, so we'll see one on the 15th and the sooner you can supply that information, the better.
Yes.
Do we typically have a deadline for that?
Usually two weeks before.
Two weeks before, if that's possible.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Okay, so...
Do you have an email or something? Oh, oh.
That's it, there's no public hearing, there's no old business. Um, I don't know that you need to be under it for, um... Well, we can... This is Vanessa and Catherine, you're not gonna be here.
Right, I'm gonna be here.
Are you gonna be here next time? February 15th?
Yep. Sure, yeah. I'll put that off, yeah, I'm gonna instruct.
So we have it right there? We need it for quorum, I just wanna make sure we have the quorum. Okay, great.
I'll be here. I believe you.
Yes, that makes sense. And you are definitely here too? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great, so we'll have the quorum. You can go on vacation.
Okay.
All right. Uh, anything else, Kim?
No, I'm sorry. You just talked about February and half.
Right, we have the quorum, we have three.
Yeah. Everything's good.
All right. Whitman and why she's not on there?
Oh, sure. Uh, so at the last, yeah, December, the board had scheduled a public hearing for Catherine Whitman. Um, but Ms. Whitman, you know, part of the scheduling of public hearing, in addition to the town posting the notices that they sent, the applicants sent it out to the nearby neighbors that thinks within 500 feet of something. Anyway, Ms. Whitman didn't get a chance to send out the notice in time. So that's why the public hearing has been postponed until the neighbors receive the notices.
Okay.
So, um, assuming the notices are sent out, I think that we should be having it February 15th, um, subject to the notices going out.
Okay, let me know and, um, because I know I did the resolution the last time I think on that. You know, if they can... I'm up for doing that resolution, so it's really just...
Yeah, it's the same...
It's the same.
Request.
Yeah.
Um, you know, obviously we need to see if any of the neighbors have any concerns with it to consider, but it is the same variance that was granted last year.
Yeah, okay, great.
Who's bringing it to be on motion to this public hearing?
No, because it was already scheduled, so this is not... No actual... No actual...
Just announcing the pre-schedule.
Yeah, no actual taken to deny, but yeah. Subject to, um, the notice going out, it should be expected to be on the February agenda. And we'll keep the agenda up to date, so if it's not on there, it's not on there.
But they were up already in front of us, right?
Was it? Wouldn't it?
Were they up already in front of us?
So, um, last year, yeah, last, uh, what? I guess it was two years ago?
No, it was, well, it was a little over a year ago.
Because it's gone, because it expired.
Because it just expired, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, is that what it was? It went, uh-huh.
Yeah, so... So there was a variance request, maybe it was 2021 and...
The side yard setback and, uh...
It's a very small lot. It was... It's kind of similar to this situation where, you know, it was rezoned at some point. So it's a very small lot in perhaps, uh, see, is it the RA-10 zone or RC-58? So it's also an RA-10. And I think it's like less than an acre, maybe just over an acre.
Uh-huh.
And so there had been a house on there at one point. Yes, yes.
Right. They destroyed the house or not destroyed, but they...
They tore down. They tore down the existing house that had been there. And then they...
About torn down.
Oh, but they did not have a permit to tear it down, just with...
Right.
Oh, I see, so... Details, stop.
Details.
But... But because... Because it was torn down and built back up, they were not grandfathered into...
Of course.
The existing setbacks. But if you look at the setbacks in terms of the RA-10, they like really overlap. So no matter what, they would still need variances. But... But because it was torn down, they initially had wanted to shift the house about eight feet to the south from, you know, kind of similar in size, but shifted about eight feet. Um, when they first applied, a neighbor, a nearby neighbor had raised concerns about that impact of having it that much closer. So the board had modified the variance request to just have the house shift about four feet rather than eight feet. So that's what's being applied for is the variance that shifted only four feet to the south.
And Catherine and I were out there, and actually I think we met, the neighbor went through that.
Yeah.
Thought that was a reasonable accommodation. So, um, but they just didn't act on it within the year plan.
Yeah, they... They were in front of the planning board. So after they got the variances, they went to the planning board and, um, I think this either septic or engineer or something caused it to be delayed one way or another. So the... We had in our resolutions that the variances have to be acted upon in a year or they expire. And they're still, I believe they're still in front of the planning board. Oh, they must be because they don't have the variances yet. So they're still in front of the planning board. They didn't get their final approval, the building approval. So now they're back, just a redo essentially.
It happens from time to time.
It happens.
So, all right, well, we don't have anything else, so, uh, motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Okay, second? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, great.